Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, December 19th, 2018, or almost to the end of the year. We begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance and invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we begin our meeting with public comment, and we have two people signed up for public comment, and I am going to call Kirin Connolly. Thank you for doing the phonetic spelling of your name. If you would go over to this -- yes, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you. I appreciate the appreciation effort. My name is Kirin Connolly. I'm an attorney. I represent BNRG Renewables, which is a solar developer. I've sent you all a letter a little over a week ago outlining four projects that are being built here in Marion County, one of which is already under construction, and the other three of which are going to be built in the first half of next year. Those projects are all fully permitted. There's not a land use decision for you all to consider, but as I described in my letter, BNRG would like to enter into a pilot payment in lieu of tax agreement with the county for each of these four projects. We have, along with the letter that I sent you, we circulated both a draft form of agreement. It's a standard version. It's the same version that Polk County uses, for example, as well as a study that we commissioned to compare the known taxes that would result from a pilot agreement versus an estimate of what central assessment would determine over the life of the pilot agreement, those 20 years that the agreement would govern. And what the study shows, and I think what the overall picture is, is that on, over that period, it's revenue neutral, both for the county and for my client, but the real advantage both to the county and to my client is having certainty about the amount and the rate of those tax payments, rather than having to await central assessment and seeing what they're going to do each year in terms of taxing the property. And so, my client would like to have the certainty that goes along with it. It helps them with, you know, financing the projects going forward, and I would think that the county would like a steady source of revenue for these projects, rather than being at the mercy of the whims of whatever central assessment determines the project is worth any given year. And so, to that, and I'm here today to ask the Commission to direct staff to finalize and enter into these four pilot agreements, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about any of these projects or about pilot agreements more broadly.
Well, thank you for coming today, and I do remember seeing the letter. I'm just not sure where it is, like who it went to. So, and as you know, it's almost Christmas and
It is.
Various people are in and out right now. So, we will track it down and figure that out.
Just one comment. You're not going to like what I have to say, but I don't know that I want to be in a position that we encourage or support either way, and so we have to have some talking about even -- I know we've had some discussions already, but
In the past.
I'm not confident where I want to be on this. So, we're going to need some more time.
I understand it not being a policy decision, and again, I'm here on behalf of my client there. You know, I think ultimately it's not a revenue difference to them, one way or the other, or to the county. I think it's just a matter of the certainty. But it's also not really a land use policy sort of decision. It's not, you know, these four projects are going to get built regardless of whether or not we enter into a pilot agreement. It's just a taxation and revenue question for the three year.
That's what I'm thinking. We might have sent it down to the assessor, but I don't quote me on that. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I did try to reach out to Mr. Rolfang on several occasions and just never heard back, so.
Right, yeah, so we'll track it down and make sure we have an opportunity for us to talk about it as a board. So, what's your timeframe?
Well, there's the rub, is that these would need to be executed before the end of the year.
Oh, okay.
Which is the, it's my understanding, I think there's, I understand some counties think that there may be a slightly different timing, but my understanding is that to be effective, they need to be executed by the end of the year.
I see Bruce taking notes, so we'll figure it out, right?
Yep, we'll track it down.
All right.
Certainly, and if it'd be helpful, I've got hard copies here I could leave.
Why don't you provide those to Bruce? That would be great.
We had that discussion, remember, on the same issue a year or so ago, on some issues, but not on this one.
Right. Great.
Any other questions that I can?
Not for me.
Well, I just, I heard you talking. I'm not sure we made a decision. I know we discussed it, but it was something that we could do, not that we said we wouldn't.
I think it was, I think it was the concept of the policy we reviewed, and it's been over a year ago.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
I don't remember the details of that, but we've had that issue before us. I don't think it was for a decision, but it was about the policy, trying to explain it to us, so. I, when I heard the end of the year, today's
The 19, I recognize it. It's a short timeframe, and I would suggest that this is not us requesting that the policy, that the county adopt a broad policy on pilot agreements generally, or on what the process should be going forward, but simply a question for these four specific projects, whether or not you'd like that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. And David Beam.
I'm an advocate for special needs population in Salem. I was wondering if we can get the funding for the airport, for bringing more companies in Oregon for Salem and Marion County, because a lot of businesses want to stay here, and a lot of them can't come because they've gotten away, a lot of them don't know where everything is in Marion County. So, I was wondering if we can do something on Facebook or something to about Oregon, and I was thinking about the county commissioner would do that for me, for businesses.
Well, David, I think that's a great idea, and I know that Mr. Cameron's going to be taking on Travel Salem this next year, and that would might be a place where we could actually get some ideas about doing some more advertising about Marion County.
Because I was thinking, could a lot of people, disability people work at Goodwill and Rock West, and I think we should add that in there for the county, for the county commissioners.
Very good.
Thanks, David.
And I would work with you on that.
All right. Well, David, you have been such a solid advocate. You come all the time and share your ideas with us, and you have served as a key volunteer on the Fair Board. You've been on the Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Council. What other council have you been on?
I'm on doing stuff for TRIMET. I am doing that, and I'm doing stuff for the mayor of Salem, and doing stuff for the governor. And only thing I want to do is get Oregon number one in the nation. That's all I'm going to do.
Well, you, we had a conversation back last summer late.
Yep.
And you were telling me that you wanted to be an ambassador for Marion County officially.
Yes, I should have.
And you have been an ambassador for Marion County, but we just haven't made it a formal ambassador position. So, we have something we want to present to you today.
Okay.
Before I leave Marion County, so stay right there.
And Commissioners, I still want to do on the Fair Board. I want to stay on that, because I want to bring more people here in Oregon.
Chair.
Well, you are definitely still on the Fair Board as a key volunteer. Tamara's, okay, so now come up here. We hope this fits. So, on the back, it says Marion County Ambassador, David Beam, and on the front, it's got our Marion County logo, Marion County, Oregon. So, when you wear this, you will, everyone will see that you are our ambassador.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And every ambassador needs a handsome bag to be able to carry his papers in, and so for you, we have this bag, and it's got a strap in here. It opens up, and you can carry your papers inside the zipper pouch. There you go.
Thank you.
All right. Let me shake your head.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Right, so you keep being our ambassador, all right? All right.
Thank you. And I will wear it.
Is there anyone else who didn't have a chance to sign up for public comment? All right, we will move into our consent agenda, and whose turn is it?
I think it's down here. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll move a consent agenda. Under Business Services, approve a recommendation to uphold pay grades for five classifications. Number 006, permit specialist training. Number 057, human resource specialist confidential. Number 078, human resource specialist senior confidential. Number 276, corrections health program supervisor. Number 349, waste reduction coordinator. Also under Business Services, approve recommendation to adjust upward pay grades for four classifications. 009, permit specialist. 024, payroll analyst. 028, legal department specialist confidential. 030, payroll specialist confidential. Under Finance, approve a quick claim deed to convey real property tax ID number R20006, located behind 1620 Stonehedge Drive, Kaiser, Oregon. Under Health and Human Services, approve amendment number five to contract for services with Willamette Valley Community Health to add $680,000 and to extend the period of performance through December 31st, 2019, for public health, physical health, chemical dependency, and residential alcohol and drug services. Under Public Works, approve an order, reappointing Andrew Schmidt to the Marion County Water Quality Advisory Committee for a four-year term beginning January 1st, 2019, ending through December 31st, '22, 2022.
And a second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion on any of them? All in favor, the motion say aye.
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 All right, those are approved. Now, we will move, we have two action items, and then a public hearing noticed at 9:30. So, the first action item is under Board of Commissioners. It's to consider an order approving a new administrative policy, number 214, Guidelines for Legislative Advocacy, and Lisa Traurnick is here to present this item. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As you know, I'm here to present new administrative policy 214, which covers legislative advocacy. This policy formalizes the legislative advocacy process that the county has had for many years and just really outlines the guidelines for going to other government bodies, primarily our state legislature, federal delegation, and other groups such as transportation districts, school boards, city councils, and speaking on behalf of the county. It establishes guidelines for advocacy on policy and administrative and technical issues, pending legislation, and written correspondence to legislators, other elected officials, and policymakers. This has been a process that the county has followed for many years, but the primary need now is to establish the framework for interacting with the legislature and to really outline the steps involved. Any legislative advocacy is, goes through the Board of Commissioners' office, and we have the Government Relations Manager in the Board's office. Barb Young is our Government Relations Manager, and so any testimony that county employees would like to give to the legislature or these other groups on behalf of the county really need to be approved by the Board, and so this policy formalizes that process. The concern here is that ad hoc, ad hoc testimony to any of these groups can be counter to the formal position of the county, and we want to make sure that everybody's working in line. This policy applies to all county departments, employees, advisory boards, and volunteers, and we've reviewed it at department head meetings, we've reviewed it at management update, Central Services has reviewed it, and so I'm here to ask for formal approval of this policy, and I thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions?
No, I don't.
Madam Chair, just not question, but thank you, Lisa, for the work on this, and it's actually changed some things that we're doing with the Public Safety Coordinating Council. We have in the past always approved our federal agenda, but not formally adopted our other agendas, like our local Public Safety Coordinating Council, and so we're going to be actually, next week, I believe, adopting that here as a result of this policy, and it's interesting trying to follow the legislature, as we all know in this room, it moves so quickly. So, even adopting, formally adopting a policy, we still need the flexibility. And the other thing that I think that we're doing that'll help us is to, on a weekly basis at Management Update, to have a section during the legislative session that will actually have a standing legislative update, so department heads can come and talk about issues that may be going on over at the Capitol that we can give input to or help go over and testify for or against, or be neutral on. So, I really appreciate this. It's going to help.
I think it's important to recognize that, first of all, the philosophy behind this, or the overarching principle, is that we want to be aligned in speaking with one voice when we're at the legislature. It is not effective for Marion County representatives to be over there and for the Board to find out that someone is testifying on something and it doesn't align with the viewpoint of the Board. So, that's kind of the overarching philosophy behind it, but the, it also acknowledges, first of all, the flexibility needed, that sometimes things shift rapidly, and so people need to be able to not have to jump through too many hoops to get the Board's approval on it, especially in the heat of legislative sessions, when they sometimes go on 24-hour notice on bills. And the other is that we do have elected officials who are independently elected, and the policy acknowledges that as well, but simply asks them if that, if their position is not aligned with the county's position, to make sure that they state that they are there as, in their role as the elected official, but that it is not the county's position, so that we are clear in our messaging over at the Capitol. And then, this doesn't just reflect what we're doing at the state legislature either. It reflects, I think, federal and, yeah, working with agencies and all of the different areas that you could do with advocacy.
Ready for motion?
I am ready for motion.
All right, Madam Chair, I would make a motion. We do approve a new administrative policy 214 that are guidelines for legislative advocacy.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this new administrative policy. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 It's approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Second item, under Community Services, consider approval of an order distributing video lottery receipts in the amount of $400,000 to the Oregon Garden to promote economic development in Marion County. I have Tamara Getz.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, Tamara Getz, Director for Community Services, joined today by
Ally Pennell, Development Director for the Oregon Garden Foundation. And we are here again today to ask for your consideration in a board-designated allocation for the Oregon Garden for three specific, excuse me, specific purposes. That would be to help with transportation through the purchase of a tram, repairs of a key feature of the garden, the bridge, and then also maintaining or repairing other key features, such as water features, within the garden. This is an up to $400,000. Ally has been working extremely hard trying to find the most appropriate items that are needed to make these three things happen, as well as finding the best price. We know that price doesn't always determine quality, and so that is one thing that she is really looking into, to making sure, for example, that the tram can handle the terrain at the garden. We were, as you know, earlier this year, we approved our Economic Development Strategic Strategy that outlined how we were going to be investing in our community. Oregon Garden was identified in that. This is a new addition to that strategic investment, but yet it is still aligned. To make that happen, we had, through our previous conversations and commitments, through agreements with Oregon Garden that predated me, in their support, we've been receiving payments from the Oregon Garden that were not included in our approved budget, to the nature of about $121,000. So, we would use those resources that we received from the Oregon Garden Foundation through the settlement payments, in part to pay for some of these costs. The remaining costs, the balance of whatever is billed up to the $400,000 would come out of our contingency funds, and so we would not need to upset the balance of the Economic Development Strategic Plan or reduce any further our budget for the different projects. In your packet, there is a letter that was from a gentleman from the community, Witchel Craig, and Ally pointed this out, and I just thought that it was a great thing to read into the record. It's in the second paragraph, and it says, "The garden, it seems to me, has many functions. Among the most important is education, the introduction into the lives of all of us, the tremendous value of horticulture. The garden serves as a, the garden serves to provide a stimulus for a love of the nature, beauty of the floral, of our world. The stimulus gives," stimulus meaning these resources, "gives impetus to horticulture research in the fledging minds of our youth, the pleasure of gardening, and wonder at the natural beauty of our unique region. The garden serves as a teaching resource to not only our children, but to all citizens. A pillar of that resource is the ability to show the entire acreage of the garden to all, young and old, layman halt, as well as the hale and hardy. To do this, it is vital to offer a transportation system that will reach into every corner of the garden." And I think that that really is, I think, appreciated by many in our community when you have events or daily activities that are happening out at the garden. To be able to see the expanse of acreage that is there, transportation is truly important for some, and right now, we're not able to utilize past purchases, so this will help the garden flourish for years to come. Additionally, I think the water features, the garden, within the garden, as well as the bridge, are features that really stand out in the minds of the people, that, sure, it could be without, but when we're really trying to create an attraction that brings people beyond just our own neighbors and our bordering communities, but nationwide, how do we get people to come here? And it's through the splendor that is represented through the garden. So, that is what is within this request, but Ally, you may have some additional things you might want to highlight.
Yes, I'd be happy to. The main thing is, what we've really wanted to do with the potential of gaining these funds is make sure when every visitor comes, that they take away a really astonishing experience. The garden was built about 20 years ago now, and just a lot of these items, especially the bridge, has just served its lifetime, and so, especially now with the recent, the debt forgiveness being, we're at a really critical point where I think people will be more interested in coming to the garden. We just want to make sure that when they, when they leave, they want to come back. And especially with the tram, this year, we had an unfortunate issue of it breaking down several times and having to offer limited operation times, and so we just don't want, we don't want that to impede anyone's ability to see the garden. The tram also adds an educational, about 25 minutes, talk, which talks about the history of the garden, points out different features of the garden, and really does give a full tour of the experience. So, it's not just a mobility issue, it really is an education and an interpretation feature, too, for people to be able to use the tram. And then, along the lines with the water features, a lot of those have just, they're beyond the maintenance budget, and so a lot of those have just served their lifetime, and so we just want people, when they come, to be really blown away by the magnificence and not to be distracted by anything that's not operating.
Additionally, I want to point out that in your packet, there is, for the first time, a capital improvement plan. So, Oregon Garden Foundation and its partners have worked very hard this year in bringing this to you for the first time, in the county's relationship with the garden, and so I think, under Ally's leadership and support from its board members, the work has been done to make sure that they look forward, to make sure that they have the resources needed to maintain these features in the coming years. Any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Well, I think it would be good just to talk for a minute about the, how you prioritize these particular items out of all of the capital needs for this particular allocation of funding. Could you do that?
Yes, so the Amazing Water Garden Bridge, it's the bridge that is, also serves for the safety, for accessibility into the garden. There are other ways, if there was an emergency, there are other roadways, but it's meant to be able to be drivable on, and the boards have just deteriorated in the last about 18 months, to the point of it being a health problem. And that we do have, we are willing to take from our operating funds to support that, because it is such an immediate need, and so that's the number one priority. We also, just to mention some community support, we would be getting all the specially milled lumber at cost from Withers Lumber, and so that was a thing a board member went out and utilized. So, we are getting, it would be substantially more expensive had we not had that community tie and that support from that company. The tram was, the tram is also from 2003, the current tram that is doing the most heavy lifting, and so we've gotten some quotes from that company, but the main thing was, because our audience is an older audience, and people come, and people do travel typically a distance to come to the Oregon Garden, because it's in Silverton, we just, it was very unfortunate for it to have so many breakdowns this year, and we did have maintenance come out, we did have several repairs on it, and do plan to repair it also, to have a backup, so in the event that we purchase the new tram, we'll be able to have a backup, so that people aren't left waiting. But it's really unfortunate when a group comes out and then you see, you know, a few people in the family not be able to experience the garden, and because we have had this amenity pretty much since the early days of the garden, people have come to rely on that, and so they did a really good PR job of explaining the tram hours. It was still running, but just on weekends this summer, so they did do a good communication job with that, but people don't always check websites and things beforehand, so that's the tram, we just really want to be able to bring that back, so that when people come out, they have a great experience. And then, the water features is just another thing. There's so many, there's over 23 different specific gardens, and so that's just an area that we'd really want to fix them all at once, so that, so that they won't be a problem again. A lot of them have been replaced over the years, and we have really great maintenance and horticulture staff who understands the features and is able to do these repairs just on regular staff time, versus potentially in the future, if we had other personnel, they might not know how to, how to deal with these as well.
And so, looking at the, okay, so the, I'm sorry, the Amazing Water Garden Bridge, the project planned for 2019, this allocation covers that, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, the tram operations you talked about just now, and the water feature repairs, and so the grand staircase and the entrance sidewalk, are those things that are included in what we're allocating for, or is that outside?
Those are outside, so we're looking for either fundraising or other grants to fix those.
Okay, but those also, it sounds like, are
We do, we do want to do those as soon as possible.
Necessary?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, you have a five-year plan in here?
Yep.
For a whole lot of other upgrades to buildings and that type of thing, and so what is your plan for fundraising for the remaining capital improvement?
Well, one of the things we are hoping is to have some, some help with, from the city of Silverton, because it is city of Silverton land, but beyond that, we do, are looking at different grants, mostly for tourism at this point, because we have such a unique collaboration, because we have the resort at the top of the hill, the garden, and then also the city of Silverton.
Additionally, we, the group has been working hard in resolving its agreement with Marion County, so that it can become more than just a debt organization. So, now Oregon Garden and So, now, Oregon Garden and Moonstone and the city of Silverton will be working on solidifying that, that they'll also be, the foundation will also be receiving proceeds out of the garden's operations, et cetera, and not have to pay Marion County back for its indebtedness. So, those resources now can be put into the CIP and supports, and then the help that Marion County through this grant and its other five-year grant, to help make sure that it is on sound footing as we move forward.
And there was a line in here, and I hope I didn't misread it, that there's still $140,000 in debt. Is that to Silverton? Who is that to?
So, there's 100, we have 120, if, I'm not exactly sure what line you're speaking to, but there's 121 of settlement payments that we received this fiscal year, that was not included in our Community Services Economic Development budget. Therefore, I'm proposing that we, through the next supplemental process of the budget, that I accept those dollars, that 121,000, and then we would move resources out of our contingency to cover this request. And any expenses that are paid out of this agreement would be based on expenses, not on a grant allocation.
So, I'm looking under number four on the page, are there page numbers on this?
No.
Page three of three.
This was just, this was to help explain a little narrative, to go with our budget about that.
Right. It says, "The city of Silverton advocates 40% of its transient occupancy tax to pay the remaining OGF debt of $140,000 projected in 2019."
So, that's the amount, so there is still OGF debt. It's owed to city of Silverton and...
That's what I was wanting, it's owed to Silverton.
Yeah, and owed to individuals who did loan the garden debt in the early days and during the receivership. And so, we project that it'll be paid off in about six to eight years, with the current mechanisms. But this was just kind of calling out that piece in our budget, that we are still doing those processes that have been happening.
Okay. So, the gigantic debt was...
Correct.
...forgiven by Marion County, but you still have some debt?
We still have some. And the positive thing of this is, first thing to be paid back is the interest. So, that would be unrestricted funds from the city of Silverton, that they'd be able to allocate out into the community for other things.
Okay. All right, thank you. What would you like to say?
Well, I don't know that I can cover it better than Tammy and Ally have, but just kind of a review of ours, and perhaps my thinking. We've spent this last year really looking at the garden, trying to put it in good shape, to get the county out of even operations responsibility, let it stand alone and succeed. I think that's really what the goal was. So, I have to confess that a lot of this request comes from my observation that there's still some big needs, some immediate needs, that need to be taken care of, to feel good that it can go on and prosper. The tram, in particular, to me, I became more aware that we weren't, even less than what they described, we weren't offering it at all. And that's such a key feature. I have a bad knee now, so what, I can't enjoy the garden? I knew that older people were being dropped off there, and their experience was standing by the gift shop and looking around, and that isn't the garden. And so, it's just such a key feature. And how could the foundation, although they're in better shape, to set up a capital campaign, to fund the tram, and the other two items we're talking about, isn't going to happen overnight, it'd be a couple of years away, and I think it'd just be a disaster not to have that. So frankly, I was, I don't know the right word, bold enough or whatever, to suggest, could we, could we use economic development money to bridge this over, and leave the garden in a feeling that it can succeed and prosper? And that's what's behind this.
Well, I'm concerned that we're spending, is this the same company we bought the last tram from, that we got by this?
We have two different companies that I've looked at so far, and about four different tram models. And so, there was, in the interim, there has been a second tram bought that's on property, that's not, it doesn't handle the hills very well, but it is still there. But these trams that I've looked into are similar to the one that has kept going, for the most part, since 2003. And then, there's another company, which has, they service Disneyland, and some of the bigger zoos and aquariums throughout the country. And so, what we have, I would, we don't have the exact tram picked out right now, but for the ballpark for pricing, we have a few different options. And we definitely want that to be a very solid decision, which one we purchase.
And is the criteria to stick strictly to an electric tram?
No, it's not. I think that electric, well, right now, it was propane.
Okay.
The current one is propane. There was an electric one that didn't really work well in the garden at some point...
Ah, just as I say, the hills.
...that was purchased, not too long ago. But we're looking at gasoline, because we have gasoline tanks that are on the property, and so, for convenience, and because now things are a lot cleaner burning than in 2003. But they could service these with propane, if that was what we end up deciding on.
And then, has the foundation ever looked at other alternative, you're not going to like what I have to say here, alternative transportation while people are on the property, i.e., could you provide electric bicycles, assisted bicycles, or other things in addition?
We haven't looked at that yet. Most of what has been looked at is just based on people's ability. So, they let people use wheelchairs, but they are push-powered, they're not like a scooter. Part of the challenge with any of that is a little bit...
Pedestrians.
...liability, because there is, there's, it goes from gravel to asphalt to poured concrete, you know? So, there's different areas. But that wouldn't be a bad, you know, direction in the future, to just know about that stuff.
So, I'm going to be staying over there between Christmas and New Year's for Christmas in the garden, so I'm excited. I think I'll have to walk. I don't have a bad knee, like my fellow commissioner, but maybe I could bring my electric golf cart, it's camouflaged, and I could drive around.
I've seen it. Ally, make it work, if that's what it takes.
And I could just get into the garden, and nobody could see me, because I'd be in my camouflaged golf cart.
I know the ways to get in and out, so...
All right, yeah. So, just the other, the other thing I wrote down here was, I know we've, you mentioned a lot of the, in your plans, the tours with the students. Has anybody done any research? I know the state of Oregon passed this outdoor schools issue, I don't remember what measure that was, a couple of years ago. Is there any tie to that, or possible ties to that, for funding for these tours, for the students, and potentially having more of a long-term education program as an outdoor school at the garden? Have you looked at that?
I haven't specifically looked at it, but I do believe Oregon Forestry Resources Institute has looked at it. They're the ones, they do a lot of teacher training, specific for outdoor school, and they've done some trainings at the garden, I believe. But that's a good, a good angle to go towards, I think. We do, I would like, in the future, right now, that education program serves mostly the forestry and ecology principles, which is really good. But I would like to see in the future, maybe some horticulture or hands-on gardening experience. There's been lots of different programs that have come and gone over the years. And as the foundation and the garden gets our capacity up, I think having more direct garden-related stuff would also be a good program.
And then, the last tie, I guess maybe I said that already, Oregon State Extension Services, as well as the Research Center that we support up in, it's actually in Clackamas County, but Sam serves on that advisory board now, I did for a while. Is there any ties there with OSU and the Extension District, and the Research Center, and what they do versus what the garden does?
Are you talking about Willamette Research Station? No?
No, yeah. I think we probably have some work to do there.
Yes. So, we, I did bring that up to them earlier in the year, and the response that I got back is that they were in communication with OSU Extension, looking for ways for them to have connection. OSU Extension actually held one of its trainings in the garden earlier this year. So, they're looking for ways to connect, but I think there's always an opportunity to strengthen that.
And the reason I say this, because this is the Oregon Garden, I keep saying this, it's not the Marion County Garden. And OSU has this footprint throughout the whole state, and I think that, when you go up to the Research Center, if you've ever taken a tour, and maybe that's something to do with the board, we could, I think, is Bundy still there, Mike? We could coordinate the board to go up there and have a tour, because they actually are doing things in the Research Center that impact our nurseries, our agricultural industries in Marion County. And somehow, if they could maybe even use some of the property at the garden as a demonstration of what they do, when people are on these tours, I think there's a, there's a huge need to educate the public for our agricultural research, and what's happening, and how valuable that is. I mean, it's our number one industry in Marion County. So, I think there's an opportunity there to really cross over and expand the vision of the board, and what's happening at the garden within agriculture. I just think we've got opportunity. Sam, and I appreciate you standing up and saying, "Here's some funding to get this going," but we've got to find a way to make this thing sustainable through the state, and make it a really, a gem that will go, I'm going to support it between Christmas and New Year's, and do the Christmas, I'm not getting on ice skates, though, like you did.
If I could make some comments.
Sure.
And Ally is a close link to, what I always wanted this to do was reestablish the link with the Nurseryman Association, because this should be the showcase for what Oregon grows, and in particular, Marion County grows. And she has a relationship there, and is building on that. And then, unrelated, just a couple of comments going through my mind I didn't lay out. The other part of this tram that's important to me is, because it provides a place to experience the tram, even on those inclement days, and get some cover and take a round, and obviously, we have those. Oh, and then, I was hoping with approval, that it be available when the true tourism season starts in the spring. And so, we'll be getting going on real quickly. But I had one other thought, just for you. Now, you know Portland, they had this scooter prod...
Where's that?
Well, we don't talk about it, you're right. But they have these scooters laying around, and I want to see if Ally can get one, so you'll have it for this weekend, see if maybe that's the answer to your, to your traveling. I'm a little concerned about you with no brakes coming in.
Does it have an umbrella attached to it?
No, it's coming into the pond, but at least the fountain will be working when you get there, so it'll be delightful.
And I would just add about the relationships with OSU and with plant trials, that is something that we would like to have. We still are kind of working on our bigger strategic plan to encompass more than just improvements, but to really add those relationships and bring that back. That was a lot of the vision of the early days, and then, just with the cost, you know, the reality of the cost to operate, and everything being built so beautifully at the beginning, some of those relationships have fallen aside.
Okay, Madam Chair, if you're ready?
I am ready.
Okay. I'll move that we approve an order distributing video lottery receipts in the amount of $400,000 to the Oregon Garden to promote economic development in Marion County.
I'm going to second one little minor that should be in there, it is in up to.
Up to.
Yeah. Because we're hoping it'd be some less.
Correction on the motion, it's up to four hundred.
We'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the order. Just a minute. And the motion is up to $400,000. What does the order say?
I was just going to say, we should up, we should change that to include, remove the hyphen, and say up to $400,000. So, we can make that adjustment and have it available this morning.
We can sign it later then.
Under A, okay.
All right. All right, so we've got the motion, we've got a revised order. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All right, it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great conversation, too.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, it is after 9:30, so we will move right into our public hearing. I'm going to open a public hearing, this is under Public Works, and it's to consider amendments to the Urban and Rural Zone Codes. Brandon Reich has been waiting patiently. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. This year, on August 1st, the Marion County Board of Commissioners initiated consideration of code amendments to the Urban and Rural Zone Codes, and directed the Marion County Planning Commission to hold a hearing on the matter, and make a recommendation to the board. On October 30th, the Marion County Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the amendments. No one provided public testimony at the hearing. Marion County Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the code amendments be adopted by the Marion County Board of Commissioners. In November, at a management update hearing, the board directed staff to schedule a public hearing for today. These amendments incorporate changes made by the legislature recently, and are our local code, and include changes to comply with federal requirements related to floodplain management. Other amendments would correct errors and streamline the planning process for customers and property owners at our counter, and make standards clearer and simpler for property owners and neighbors. So, with that, I'm available to answer any questions about the amendments, or to discuss any of them that you'd like.
Thank you. I have one that I kind of zeroed in on this morning, on the wireless communication facilities. So, this would allow an outright permission, or whatever, to have wireless communication facilities in the public zone. So, the public zone would be what, like parks and...
In the rural area, public zones tend to be cemeteries and areas with cell towers, occasionally a park. Sometimes parks are in the EFU zone still. The way the code was, the way the code currently is, there, if you try to do the wireless communication in the public zone, you have to provide this additional information, but there's actually no trigger, and hasn't been a trigger, for any kind of a land use review. When we did some amendments some years ago, it was just kind of left out the concept. So, it kept including the concept of providing this information, but there's nowhere to put it, there's no file, there's no public process for it to go through. So, the idea is to take away that requirement when there's no land use process.
So, is there any ability for the entity that manages that public zone to be able to determine where a good location would be, or whether they don't want it on there at all, or, you know, that kind of thing? So, how does that work?
Right now, they're permitted outright in the zone.
Okay.
And that wouldn't change.
So, they're already permitted outright in the zone?
They're permitted outright. There's a requirement to submit information, but the information just doesn't go to any process. And this is kind of an oversight, when we, it's similar language to what we had in the acreage residential zone, the residential zone.
I'm just seeing kind of, you know, the same solar kind of issue, you know, where you have a proliferation of cell phone towers, and nobody has the ability to, you know, kind of negotiate that, or manage that.
So, something the planning, we could look at with the board, would be changing the public zone in the future, to have a requirement to go through a land use review process.
Right. Well, that probably would make everybody scream, right?
Don't know. In the EFU zone, even in the EFU zone, they're actually relatively simple to get, because they demonstrate that. They need to put it in a location to get coverage. There's no requirement for the appearance of it, there's no special requirement for a setback for it. So, it's just kind of a streamline. It's pretty streamlined in the EFU zone, but the material that they have to submit in conjunction with the public zone is pretty elaborate and thorough.
Is there, have there been any problems with it up to this point, any complaints?
No, we haven't. We had one variance last year, a year before, regarding the height of a tower. Wanted to go above the height, above 150 feet, I think.
So, there is a limit on height?
I believe it's 150 feet.
Okay. I was looking to see, because it looked like all of these different, I guess, these aren't, the requirements aren't taken out, it's just the information that people have to submit, is that right?
That's correct.
So, there is a section that actually has some parameters around what the wireless communication tower could look like, but maybe it's in a different part of the code?
It is in a different part of code. I believe there's a height restriction, 150 feet.
All right, I thought we were removing like, any requirements at all. So, it's just the information that needs to be submitted.
It just ended up being kind of an odd amendment, the way it ended up with that language in the code.
All right.
So, a question, just above that one, thank you, Madam Chair. The, it's the permits the kitchen in the open livable space, Brandon?
Yes.
How is that a change? Because, you know, obviously, we're, we've been looking at, how do we have more dwelling units? And I'm trying to read this and understand the fact, it sounds like it allows a kitchen, an extra kitchen in a dwelling. It's on page...
Yes.
Page three and four there, bottom of three.
So, currently, we allow, the county has always allowed a second kitchen in a house. And what we said is, they have to be part of the same living space. And what this amendment does is puts that into writing, kind of the verbal policy we have when we tell people at the counter, that the second kitchen, they have to be connected by that open livable space in the house. We put that in there as one option for providing a second kitchen in a house. So, you'd go from one area to another area without any doorways. You'd go through there, like through rooms, you'd go down a staircase, however, you'd have a second kitchen. And I've seen, I've been in homes, and seen homes where they have that kind of a setup, where there isn't, aren't doors. So, they're not a separate, it's not a separate dwelling unit in that way. And what the state is concerned about is having separate dwelling units on a property. But having a second kitchen, when they're connected that way, it's still just one dwelling unit with two kitchens. But there's a second process we're offering up to, to people, saying that if you put, if you do a domestic suite, where you've got a kitchen and a bathroom and living space, and you connect it with and you connect it with the main house with a door, because having a door between the two, you don't have a, a separate living unit, because there's a doorway and you can open the door, um, and so it's more like a, it's a shared space within the dwelling.
So, so I'm, because I know where we're going with, I know where I'm going with this. Uh, so this is in a rural, so in a rural area, so I could now, based on this, I can build that extra room with the kitchen in it, as long as I have a door connecting it into the house. Can I have an exterior door, and a, a separate entrance into that room where that kitchen is?
You can. You can have a separate entrance.
So I could lock that door, and then rent out that space-
Mm-hmm.
And end up technically with a auxiliary-
Accessory dwelling.
Accessory dwelling, as long as it's connected.
But it's, it's a domestic suite, it's not an ADU, right?
It is a domestic suite.
All right.
So, uh, I talked to-
Because ADUs are not legal in the rural.
Right, but we could have domestic suites in the rural zone areas, okay, I just, right? Now we can? We can have domestic suites?
I think we always could have domestic suites, is that right?
But now we, but now we can close them off with the door.
We could always have, we could always, you can close them with the door. So I did check with the LCD. The LCD is, I have a concern about this, because it's not a separate unit. It can't stand alone. It shares a doorway, and that makes a big difference on them being part of the same unit. I checked with lenders on the same, a lender on the same, and it can't be rented, or it can't be loaned on as a duplex, because they share a doorway.
Right.
And, um, I had a friend growing up who lived in a situation like this, who had her doorway, and she had her own space as part of a main house, and it didn't feel like a separate unit, like you would want, necessarily want to live there separately from the other family if you didn't know them well, because that door is the door, and so it has that strong connection with the rest of the house. So this seems like this will be acceptable, um, to the state and kind of part of the bigger lending process and things that go on for people.
Okay, so what's this called now?
It's creative.
It's, what's it called?
It's a domestic suite.
Domestic suite, right, we're gonna have domestic suites.
I don't think we want to go to the legislature and lobby for domestic suites.
No, we don't want to, we have it.
Exactly.
And it's still part of a dwelling, which means a single family lives there, and single families, the definition includes additional people, um, whether it's some people who work at the house, who live and work at the house, or it's part of, we don't define family in particular, but, um, it could be, different family members can live there, and so-
Might have a college-age student that wants a little bit more privacy.
College-age student, there's a lot of opportunities like that.
Or a grandpa, right, my dad, right, okay.
All right. So we do not have anyone signed up, uh, for the public hearing. Is there anyone in the room that would like to testify? Seeing none, uh, I have no more questions. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Gone through it, it makes sense. So Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing and approve the amendments to the herbal, urban and rural zone codes as presented.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, and to approve the amendments to the urban and rural zone codes. And do these get just approved with this? Is there, is there an order in here?
There'll be, there'll be an ordinance.
Yeah, I figured they had to come back with something, right?
So I'm looking for a direction from the board, if you approve these, to ask me to return with an ordinance. We will return to schedule an ordinance, and then we'll adopt, we'd be able to adopt an ordinance. It'd be early, mid, early to mid-January.
All right, so in addition to the motion that you made, you're gonna direct staff to return with the ordinance that reflects the board decision?
Absolutely, fine.
Okay.
Your second agree with that?
Yeah, it's good.
So you got your direction. So any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, that is approved.
Thank you.
That concludes our business for today. We have a very short Wednesday to Wednesday calendar, because there's a pretty significant holiday coming up. So, uh, today, Wednesday, December 19th, 2019, we're just concluding our board session here at the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square. There are no meetings where two or three commissioners will be present for the rest of this week, and then Monday, county offices are open, it's Christmas Eve, but Tuesday, uh, Christmas Day, December 25th, uh, county offices will be closed. And then the board will be back here on Wednesday, December 26th, bright and early at 9:00 a.m. for our regular Wednesday board session in the Senator Hearing Room here at Courthouse Square. And for those that are, have hung in with us and are listening, we would like to wish you happy holidays and Merry Christmas, and whatever other holiday you might be celebrating.
Absolutely.
Any plans, going anywhere, or just hanging out here? Sublimity?
Oh, there's, there's a million things, we've already done some. Had a niece get married, so we combined her, she was married like in Kansas, so we combined her reception with our annual Brentano birthday, uh, Christmas party, so that was nice. But there was something else. Oh, tonight, sublimity, St. Boniface Men's Choir's gathering for practice for Christmas mass. I know you'd like that. They may give me six notes, it's still a good situation, uh, but we, they're gonna come over to the house and, uh, I'm going to try to recreate, you won't enjoy this like I do Tom, or Dwayne Bradley's Tom and Jerry mix prior to the, uh, practice, so you may want to come, Kevin, it could be very good.
Tom and Jerry?
Yeah, they're good, but he's given me the recipe and it's rather vague, I, I have to tell you the truth, so we'll see how that goes.
All right. Well, we did our Boise trip last week, so, and Christian comes home, he flies in Saturday morning, so we'll have a threesome at our house.
That'll be good. I'm having Christmas Eve with all my family up in Portland with my daughter, and I don't know, my dad and I were talking, uh, maybe Christmas Day, going and seeing a couple movies or something, you know, like, I don't know, when I'm gonna do Christmas Day, there's a good Clint Eastwood movie that just, is coming out or something.
Mary Poppins.
Yeah, Mary Poppins, I want to see that.
Is that coming out?
Yes, and I, they're going this afternoon, I can't make it.
Mary Poppins Returns.
Returned.
Right, so it's a, it's a remake, is it a Disney remake of?
Yeah, well, it's got, uh, Emily Blunt, is that the one that's married to John, who's at the office guy?
I wouldn't know that.
Well, I, I keep up on these things anyway.
Yeah.
And I understand she does a really great job, and Dick Van Dyke is also in the, the, the sequel.
Really?
Yeah, he's in his mid-90s.
Wow.
They said he looks just the same as he did, 'cause he plays the old guy, you know?
Right.
And he doesn't play Bert, they have a, I'm trying to remember, it's Linda Man, Linda? Miranda? I'm sorry, we're not done with our board session.
My dad's supposed to be here at 10 o'clock, he's gonna walk in anytime with my nephew, so, um-
So, this is off this side, but I was thinking about it. Probably would've been appropriate for two weeks from now, but I just kind of want you to savor these last two meetings that you have.
Yeah.
So I did some quick math, and figuring that, oh, I came up with about 800 board meetings-
That I've been at.
You should've done, I, it was, I think, 40-
Yeah, every now and then I went on vacation, got sick, you're right.
We canceled ones, I made you sick, whatever, I don't know.
Yeah, I do remember that one.
Just let it go.
Is this the second to last one?
I think so, I think there's two more.
I got two more. I got one, the 26th, and then the one, the first one, January.
See, but here's my point, it's too late to do it, you, if you were to run again, you could've got the thousand mark, think about that.
Yeah.
You missed, 800 is just such an incomplete number.
Set an AOC record?
Perhaps.
No, you know Randy Frankie was here 24 years, so he had to have more than that, yeah.
He was the first person I went to.
I'm just trying to point things out to you, so you, you're knowledgeable.
I'll have to calculate that. I've kept all my calendars, I could probably even get a more accurate number.
You probably have the minutes of each one, and what Sam said wrong, but we'll just let those go.
All right.
That's all right, he's gonna try to keep me-
Perfect.
-perfect, which will never happen.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
All right, anything else that we want to talk about? Right, with that, we will adjourn.